Okay, Commissioners, the next item is item number 10. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan. It's docket number 166754, block 618, lot 51, 223 West 13th Street, located within the Greenwich Village Historic District. An Italian-Age style row house built in 1851. The application is to alter the facade and excavate the front area way.
Good morning, Victor Tumonic, Preservation Staff. There are a number of alterations proposed to the primary facade. This proposal, starting at the base, excavating the area way to install a below-grade entry at the cellar, removing this wood door surround at the basement, installing a new brownstone stucco surround, removing the cementitious coating at the parlor floor, installing a new brownstone stucco, and then removing this window here at the former door opening and installing a window that matches the dimensions and details of the adjacent windows. And the architect is here to go into the detail.
Thank you, Victor.
And how am I advancing? Just the left and right. Hi, I'm Ali Hoche. I am the architect of the project. Red White is here also, the owner of the building. So, the project is located on the north side of 13th Street between Seventh Avenue and Greenwich Avenue. It is not in a flood zone. We have two photographs, historic photographs, of the building from the 1940s and the 1960s. The building is from 1851, and it is built by Rhinelander. They are two buildings he built, 223 and 221 West 13th Street. They are sister buildings. The one, our building, is on the left here. We can see the, you know, the stoop has been removed in this 1940 photograph. A window has replaced it, not resembling the two other windows that are there. It is in the Italian-Age style. The two windows are very significant because they are, although double-hung, they are faux casement windows, so the center mullion has a reveal in it which is very unique to this design. The replacement window is nothing like that. The portico that they've put in is wood, doesn't necessarily resemble the cornice on top in its detailing. There is a cementitious plaster that is seen in the 1940s photograph and brownstone below. That in the 1960s, that's all painted. All the brick is painted on the upper floors, the cementitious mixes as well as the brownstone, excuse me, in the current state, all of it is painted, the brownstone as well. Just to repeat, so we have the brick, painted brick on top, the cementitious plaster at the parlor level is painted, and the brownstone is painted below. The portico is painted wood, and we have the infill window. So, the three issues we anticipate in the project is the window above the, in the former entrance portico, the infill window, the cementitious mix, number three, and the portico at the entry level at the basement. Just to take you through the existing conditions, on the left, we have the faux casement windows. On the right, also on the parlor level, we have the infill window, the double-hung six over six, with an infill panel below, and this sort of balcony fence thing. We see just a bit of a portico below that. During this time, when this restoration work was done, or, excuse me, renovation work was done, metal lintels were put in. These are, these may predate the work that was done at the infill window. You can see this is a much inferior lintel here. This articulation is quite sort of fitting for the building, it seems. We also see some of that cementitious mix in here that is sort of tapering back to the brick. The sills on the parlor level are brownstone. They seem to have been parged over and painted. We can also see the reveal in the center mullion. The upper floor sills are sheet metal wrapped and painted. It seems to be a quick solution to deteriorated brownstone, and they seem to be in galvanized metal. The portico is done during this time, so sometime before this 1940s photograph. We can see the detailing up here does not resemble anything that we saw at the cornice. It seems to also be detailed rather poorly, or built rather poorly, although as if it was an interior detailing. Some of the articulation of the pilaster may predate this work. Been unclear. You know, some of this detailing seems to be better than some of the other things we're seeing. You know, certainly at the Capitol here, we're seeing, you know, probably dykes at best, you know, sort of dykes molding, this sort of thing, sort of off the shelf, and without much consideration for the overall architecture of the building. We've done two probes, one where the infill window is to the left of it. We can see the newer brick, it's larger, three-eighths inch mortar joints, and the much thinner, older brick of a different proportion. There's metal lath, and then the cementitious mix on top of that. Between the two casement windows, we did another probe, and here we can see how the lath has discolored the brick, perhaps leaving a residue on it. Not sure if that's reversible. There are the nails that go in to anchor the lath. While they seem to have made some effort to fall right between joints, the joints are so tight that it is chipping and damaging some of the brick. Removing the lath is also, this current work that we did, as careful as the workers were, did cause some damage to the brick itself. So, there is a bit of a struggle here in terms of the cementitious material. Our proposed work, number one, shows the replacing the double-hung window with, all the windows will be replaced, they'll all be thermally broken. The windows on the parlor level all match one another and mimic the faux casing, casement window. Number two shows, rather than removing the cementitious mix, but putting a smooth brownstone on top of that, and below at the basement level and going down to a new cellar stair would be brownstone with an articulated reveal, you know, in the sense of a masonry. This would represent some kind of a base that mimics the, you know, the Palazzo division of an articulated, heavier base, and then a more refined base above that. So, the two-part base, yeah? Three shows the portico would also be in brownstone, and that the casing, there would be casing in brownstone around it, rather than a pilaster and tableture, and that would be articulated up here with an tableture that would run across, dividing the two-part base in brownstone. Number four, the brick would be restored on the upper two floors. Going back down to number five shows the stair and the entrance to the cellar. And then back up to six, we, at the top, we see the cornice, that sheet metal cornice, it's in rather good condition. There's some dings in it which would be pulled out or filled, caulking and painting. It's in rather good shape. It would be, the paint would be removed somewhat and then repainted. The lintels are all, the sills and the lintels will both be restored. The sills to brownstone and the metal lintels would be, they're in fairly good condition. They need a drift edge on top, but otherwise, they're in pretty good condition. This just shows here, I'll start over here. We're putting in a new gate using a cast iron pattern. It mimics a 19th century pattern. It's also used in the neighboring sister building. We can see it here at the stair. It's not necessarily well-installed at the stoop next door, but we're not using, they're using a horizontal element, an element that should be used horizontally, they're using it on a stair, so some of the base conditions of those units are being submerged into the side of the stair. It's sort of irrelevant to some degree because we're not doing that, but to say that we are using a cast iron fence here, that would be in keeping with the sister building. The pavement here would go from concrete to bluestone. This area in here is the casing detail that we would use, the portico and brownstone, that would turn into these side panels, and then the rest of this interior, where we get to the door, is all in mahogany, and that would be stained and sealed. And we see a little bit of the stair going downstairs here, and this would be a garden at that point. Just some of the details, this is the casing around the door, and then the profile that is above the door is slightly proud of the casing that follows across the base that we looked at earlier. Precedents in the neighborhood, just a sort of two-part base, if you will. Here we see the basement and the parlor level, where we see the basement and the parlor level in brownstone. Again, here on 13th Street, the same. Ours does not go this high, it seems a little odd how high that is. We also have an example on this building that's not quite a row house, where we're going up to two levels. Here, you can just make out that they've, while the whole facade is brownstone, they use a darker brownstone on the lower area, and right along this area above the parlor floor, they switch to a slightly paler one. Again, sort of articulating base and middle of the facade.
Excuse me? I just had a question. You're proposing to, we look at the bottom right image, not have the right, if you're proposing not to do the top, the transition from the rusticated brownstone to the smooth, like this is done, the step, step, or like it's done on any of the, you're proposing to kind of take that, take that cornice over the doorway and kind of keep it going straight across, right? Set back a little bit, but...
Correct, correct.
Just to explain why you think that's the right way to go?
The, in part to, you know, we're going from a more rusticated brownstone, if you will, to a smoother brownstone above it. The transition, we don't have the, this sort of transition element here, but similar to this, we're proposing a transition element that would work with the casing around the portico. In these instances, like here, we see where there is no transition, though there may have been some, maybe for flower pots or something, architecturally, there's no transition between those two floors, and it seems to be unarticulated and not very flattering to the building, though appropriate as a base, yeah?
My point, understanding, your, all of these examples really have the basement. You walk down the area way and the basement, and you have, you know, the first floor, parlor floor, without the stoop.
Correct.
But your section kind of shows you going down to the cellar.
Well, there is a separate, like...
True story.
So, like here, you're entering somewhere over here, you're entering the basement, going down a couple of steps to the basement. That goes down to the cellar, so that's the cellar door. Our situation is similar to this, where the original stoop would have been over here, the entrance would have been here, that's been removed, the entrance to the building is in the basement, and then there's a cellar entrance that's sort of discreetly set behind the garden.
Do you have elevation showing everything going down to the cellar?
Yeah. So, what we're, what this does is that we're...
It's not visible from the street.
Well, this is not visible from the street because we have the garden in front of this, but for the purposes of illustrating the architectural aspects of the facade, we're showing, so one has to imagine that you're really not seeing any of this area along that line until you're within the entrance area to the building.
Does anybody else along the street kind of goes down to the cellar in the area?
Further up, I'm confused the exact number, but there are two.
Are they, you're asking if there are precedents in the neighborhood? Oh, there's several. I mean, there is, even the sister building has a similar, though it's to the basement, it has a sort of entrance below the stoop.
But currently, it's not excavated. It's not, it's gray, it's ungrayed, yes?
That's correct, that's correct.
Are escape being eliminated?
Yes.
And then the sister building, and I saw the comparisons to other buildings, but the sister building, which is probably the best comparison, is two types of material, right? It's brownstone at the base, right, and then it's three floors of brick, right? So, and the reason that we're not going back to the brick on that parlor level, all right, is that it's in too bad shape for it to actually be restored, and we've concluded that? Is that, is that right?
I would say that it has been damaged by the lath and by the nailing of the lath into it, and the concern is that the removal of the cementitious plaster will, has already in those areas shown, you know, some damage, so it's difficult to remove it without creating further damage.
But to, so to replace it, though, you have to remove it in order to do the surface you want to do on it, right? So, it is, is a possibility that when you take it off, it's, you know, that it won't be, I mean, if done carefully.
Right.
I realize there's a possibility that it might just be destroyed.
Right. I think that if that's the case, and the commission is concerned about whether we can sort of retain that brick, then I think it's something that we'd want them to work with our staff to ensure that, in fact, where you can, if it can be salvageable, that we try and restore that. Yes, Diana?
Oh, I was just thinking, I've heard Michael speak on this before, that, you know, it's often very difficult to remove this stuff without...
Depends on whether it's on the brick or on lath. This lath is attached to the brick masonry, and it appears to be fast embalmed at joints. Now, the joints between, in the press brick, is typically only about an eighth of an inch thick, so there might be some minor damage to the arrises at those places. I think the residue will probably come off relatively easily, but what I would do is ask the staff to oversee a cleaning test, first of all, our cleaning regimen, to see if the residue will come off. It very well may not, because this is Portland cement stucco. It may be well adhered to the fire skin, which means anything you do to get it off is going to wreck the brick. But I would cautiously request that that approach be taken first.
And that leads to another question, which is that if, in fact, in the small chance, the off chance that the brick actually survives, that it actually is in good condition, then the transition neck underneath it becomes superfluous, which is to say now there's a sill that's being installed that's going all the way across, not just above the door, but all the way across, as a transition from brownstone to plaster to, and then to brick. But if you won't, you won't need that, you'll just, it becomes more of a standard, flat brownstone panel, right? In other words, if it's brick, you don't really need the sill there.
Michael, and then Fred.
I'm sorry, there is another aspect to this that we have to take into consideration, where the original door was, particularly when these things got stuccoed, they use a crappy, much larger, a brick of the era. They wouldn't have been using a Philadelphia press brick.
And they did. There it is. So, we have a larger brick.
And so, there will be an issue of matching, you can manage press brick, it's not an issue, but depending on how much there is, it could be considered.
Unsightly, yes.
I just want to point out, though, all that being said, I think working with staff to see if this could come off is critically important.
Yes.
But it would be, in my judgment at least, desirable if it could come off, and I think the picture that you show on the next-to-last page of 8 Perry Street makes the point brilliantly. The houses on either side of the central house there are more, more original, more proper.
Right.
Something happened akin to what happened to your house, I guess, at 8 Perry, which mandated, for some reason, that this high water of brownstone be brought up higher than normal. It's not a disaster, it's a lot better than what you have now, but...
As far as spotting right here...
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Although they still have the stoops on 8 Perry, so it's 10 Perrys, but that is still 8, and so it's the same remedy, it's just a brownstone where there's no original thing.
I'm sorry, this is Greg Weiss, the owner of the building.
The owner, right, okay. No, I'm just making the point that I think it's still desirable to try to remove it, but it is perhaps likely that it won't be able to be removed, and we'll end up with 8 Perry Street.
Yes, Michael, you wanted to add something else?
One other thing, it, not unusually, it appears that that original press brick was painted several times before the Portland cement went on, and thus that should make removal of that residue easier.
Yes, Kim.
I think it's fair for us to say that, you know, were we to find, after taking the sort of gray cement plaster off, that the bricks could be restored, I mean, that's obviously first choice, and it's much more aesthetically appealing, it's akin to the neighboring building, which were identical mirror images of one another when they were built, and there's a common wall between the two, so if we could take that off and find that it was, you know, we could restore it.
And I think one of the, one of the reasons we need to have staff look at this is that you may take this off and find that there's a lot of damage, and I think if there is a lot of damage, then you're surgeon, it's appropriate for you to recover it, but clearly there will be some, but every building in New York has a little bit of damage.
Yes, Kim.
I wondered about your proposed front door, and how, you know, the doors on either side all seem to be basic panel doors, the existing door, right, and what was there before, so how did we get to the double doors?
Well, the existing doors are double, so this is a four-foot opening, this four-foot open, two-foot leaves on that, so it's double. To bring more light into the lobby, we've extended the glass down rather than these panels. Existing, I don't know, Home Depot more likely. Let's just see, if we go back here, we can just make out sort of a upper, a similar door. I doubt it's the same. It seems it has one, two, three, four divisions within it, yeah?
I mean, whilst we don't have examples, yeah, I can tell you, up and down the street, there are a variety of door treatments, some being narrowed with side lights and their single doors, some are double doors of this, the neighboring building has a single door, but it's on the upper level because it's a parlor entry.
I think it's more than, it's all glass. Usually there's a panel at the bottom, you have a lot of glass, and, you know, of course, then there's a panel, it's just that it's all glass.
Yes. I mean, again, the intent is to bring light into the lobby, and unlike some of the other locations, the door is set back considerably because we have this sort of, you know, the brownstone will wrap around, and we have the mahogany, so that sets back probably about four feet, I would say.
Maybe not quite as much, but a good three.
Do you have examples of other similar doors that have been approved in the district?
Yeah, yeah, there are, yeah.
So, Commissioners, from the appearance, it looks like it's a wooden glass door.
This is a double door in here, sorry.
That's a single, I believe.
I don't think it's an all-glass door. It appears to be either a wooden glass door, which is a very typical...
72 Perry is a single door with glass on the upper level. This one on the right is a double.
Here we have glass all the way down to the, to the bottom rail.
If you could go to your elevation drawing showing the door, it seems as though you've got, it's a wood or a metal and glass door, so it does have the rail at the base with a kick plate, you know, it's not solid glass.
Yeah, yeah, correct, correct. This is seven to nine inches, I believe it's a diameter.
Which is a very typical door that we approve.
Other questions for now? Okay. Yes, Roberta?
The cornice, the self-called cornice, again. Now, are there precedents for that kind of a divider, as opposed to the others that you showed us, which, you know, are smaller, slatter?
Yeah, the, the extension of this cornice and the framing of this, as much as the casement would be done, we can see that, for example, right here, where it's the same profile wrapping around the door like that.
But your door is going, your frame goes back, or is it, goes around the door, around the door?
Our frame is like this, so it goes up and around like that. There is a cornice that runs across, and...
Higher than this one.
Yeah.
I'm just talking about, so beside the door, when you look at your examples of the separation from the first floor to the basement level...
For example, you have here...
They're smaller, that's what I'm saying. I don't really know what yours looks like. I saw that profile, but compared to that, it's like three times the size or four times the size, right? And it's, and it projects out.
No, it's, I mean, this, this is just under a foot in here. That's under, it's under a foot. To the scale of the building, I think that's, should be about modestly, I think.
But did you look at just the flat version that you showed? Did you look at that? I mean, because that projects.
Yeah.
It's just that it looks more like, keeping with the, maybe the other buildings...
All right, why do we do this? Why don't we take testimony, and then we can have further discussion? And then we'll, you can remain here, but there'll be more questions, I'm sure. Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. HDC regrets the failed cementitious application to this brick house, and holds that conducting the same method of repair is a misstep. The committee saw the scars on the brick from the lath, and understands that this appears less than perfect. One saving grace on this building is that the mortar is pigmented pink. A solution to mask the imperfections is applying a thin tinted cement wash over the bricks, or cleaning them, like you all have suggested. The current height of the stucco is distracting, and this building would appear its best as an all-brick house, like its neighbor, as it was intended to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? All right, Community Board Two recommends approval of this application. Okay, so we can go back to questions or discussion. I know I cut you off, Roberta, do you...
No, and I'm...
But your concern was...
I was just concerned about the fact that it's a, it's a greater projection and a different kind of shape than you'd normally find on this house, and maybe it's distracting, maybe it's not. I'm just saying it's different, and I was just wondering why not go with the more traditional, since we're doing the new door as, you know, replacement of what was there. I don't know. I think that this could work as a flatter piece.
May I speak to this?
Yes.
I mean, I think it's well-taken, and the concern of ours, too, is, you know, it's, one thing is to draw something, the other is to see even scale with the building. We, in our drawing, were asking that the contractor provide mock-ups in situ so we can see the scale and the articulation of these profiles in the overall composition and in context. So, we share, you know, a similar concern, and I think we're doing due diligence in this process that we're specifying.
I mean, I think the articulation you're seeing there is a little more akin to the articulation above the windows, on the lintels in this building. So, I mean, I think your point is a fair one, but, you know, to the extent that we were to simplify it, then I think it needs to be taken into context in terms of the way the window treatments were as well.
So, the lintels are, would be secondary in height to this, so there's some sense of height, I think, is also a point we made.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant right now? Okay, we can move to discussion, comments. Yes, Michael, please.
I think that, in general, it's a, it's a very nice application. I think that they've done very good research on, and exposed a lot of issues. I think that the window requests are all reasonable and are appropriate. I think that the cellar stair excavation is one that I remember from that block, and is fairly typical for brownstones in general, and would be appropriate as well. I think the front doors are okay. I have seen a bunch of those, they may be a little bit off-period, but it's certainly within the, in the zone. And to the two big issues, I think that the, that, you know, the, I think with staff, the applicant can do the explorations that Michael suggested about trying to get to the bottom of the situation with the brick, and if the owner says it's better, I think the staff would try to facilitate that to the best degree they could. I think, I would just urge the applicant to... I think, I would just urge the applicant to be liberal in accepting some damage to the brick, because I think even damaged brick, even if it's not just a teeny tiny bit, would be better for this building than the stucco. If the stucco is deemed necessary, which I think we could do on a staff level, let them go ahead with it, I think that the separation between the upper and the lower is not typical, even though they're drawing it from a crown molding, you usually don't use a crown type molding on a base, so I'm sure that with staff, they could figure out how to do that in a slightly better way.
I agree. All right, very nicely put, so we can close the hearing, and John, can you read that, please?
In the matter of docket number 16-6754223 West 13th Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, applications to alter the facade and excavate the front areaway. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I recommend approval, with some modification, that the proposed partial excavation of the areaway to provide a below-grade entry at the cellar will be only partially visible from the public thoroughfare, and will not damage or destroy any significant architectural feature of the facade. That the proposed brownstone-colored stucco finish at the newly exposed cellar facade will harmonize with the restored brownstone stucco at the basement level. That the removal of the nonhistoric window and paneling at the former parlor-level entry door opening, and the installation of a new window, matching the details and dimensions of other windows at this floor, will regulate the fenestration at the altered facade. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Greenwich Village Historic District.
They're not finished as yet.
And that the applicant will work with staff to determine if the original pressed brick underneath the cementitious plaster at the parlor level is in sound condition, and if so, it will be retained and repaired in lieu of installing brownstone stucco. And that the proposed brownstone stucco cornice below the parlor windows, in the event that the brick is restorable, be changed to a flat band to match the historic condition, or in the event that the brick cannot be retained, that the applicant work with staff to develop a more appropriate or modest cornice below the parlor windows.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The application's been approved.